It's nine o'clock. I'll go ahead and call this special meeting to order. The purpose of the special meeting is to consider an agreement with PEC for the Phase Two improvements at their water treatment plant. So with that, we will consider the meeting in session. In our packet, we received the revised proposal. From October ninth to now, the scope of the work had changed. I asked Kelly to send us the diagrams to reflect the additional items of fencing and the work in the building. The fee projection reflects the additional items. My thought was, we kind of discussed in detail the original work under Phase Two. So maybe kind of recap that. And then before we look at the contract, then we'll discuss some of the fencing and the building additions. Then we'll go back to discuss the agreement that was presented. So, let's see. I apologize for not...my mind's been going all sorts of directions. And this morning is, I mean, to start off, the dog, the pup, gets my remote to the TV and starts chewing on it. So it was a good day, you know? But, let's see, find the easiest way. Is this the best summary to look at?
I think so. Yeah, so in your packet, there is a memo, just a one-sheet memo, looks like this, it's got a couple tables in it. So we'll go through this, just to kind of recap where we started and what has been done so far. And then, as Mayor said, we can go through the contract specifically, and I can address any questions with that. So the original project was started in 2017. And the original project was to first prepare a design memo that kind of outlined what the initial projects were needing to be, to address things that were going on at the facility. And we put that together in 2017. And this first table in here indicates all the things that we had discussed in that memo as things that needed to be addressed at the water plant. So the first thing were the electrical system upgrades. That was new electrical system, a generator, new electrical feeds and such, to address the aging electrical infrastructure at the plant.
And Sarah, with that project, we had some change orders, other than unseen site conditions for digging, but we added LED lighting throughout the treatment plant?
Correct. Yes, there was a change order that was processed for that, for new lighting.
Okay, so both, it's improved the visibility within the plant, but also we should have a return on cost savings for operating the lighting? Those areas are lit 24/7, aren't they, generally?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Yes. The other items that were included in the original design memorandum that have not been completed yet were the primary settling basin repairs. We, during our initial inspection phase, when we developed the design memo, we drained the settling basin and the clarifier to take a look at what needed to be done there. So there were repairs that were recommended for the settling basin, and then also the clarifier equipment as well. We also included in the original design memo, doing some renovation work on the filter building to make better use of that space and add some spaces, locker room and some kind of break room areas that are not there currently. And then also, security fencing was one of the other items that was included in the original design memo. So those are the items that are laid out in that first table. And like I said, of those, the electrical system upgrades is what was completed as part of Phase One. So the remainder of the items that we were discussing in the design memo have not been done and are included in the Phase Two contract.
And I think when we looked at the original contract in October, the security fencing and the building renovations weren't included in that proposal either.
Correct, yes. So...
So we're adding the bottom two items in the first table, plus the items below?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, after we had, so between the time that all this work was done and before we finished Phase One, the city got a letter from KDHE about a couple things that needed to be addressed. And so those first two items on the second table, the anti-degradation study and the filter backwash memo, those are things that came in response to a letter from KDHE. So the anti-degradation study has to do with permitting the residual lagoons. And then the backwash review is, there's a line that is connected back through the plant with the backwash that's connected, that it shouldn't be, it's connected into the stormwater system, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And so that needs to be addressed. So those first two items are a requirement by KDHE.
The anti-degradation study deals with the lagoons which are located...
Correct. They're just a little, am I getting my directions wrong?
And the floodplain down below.
To the east.
Yeah, so the issue there is that the city doesn't actually have a permit to discharge those lagoons to the river. And that was probably just an oversight on everybody's part, and in KDHE's quite some time ago, we've actually been going through this exact same thing with other communities, where it's just kind of come to light that they don't actually have a formal permit. So it's not that we expect an issue with that process, but it is a formal process that needs to take place with KDHE, so that there is actually a discharge permit associated with them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not reconstruction or anything of the lagoons? It's just studying to clarify what's in the lagoon, so that we can get a permit to discharge it to the river?
Correct.
Just a procedural?
It's just a procedural thing, to be able, it's pretty much a paperwork thing through KDHE.
Well then, this is now, since we're at the lagoon, jumping into your contract, it said that there was going to be some geotech, some borings down in the lagoon.
Near the lagoon, and that was a requirement, that's a requirement of KDHE for that process.
And it said that there would be no soil sampling or testing of the material?
Correct.
What's the purpose of the drilling?
Sure. So the purpose of the drilling is that KDHE basically just wants to see what the soil is like near the lagoons. They want to see what that bore log looks like, so that they know that there aren't any issues with where those lagoons are constructed and the soil compatibility. And so we don't actually do any sampling to determine any sort of strength tests or anything like that, because that's not what's required. The only thing that KDHE requires is actually seeing the bore log to look at the soil conditions.
So you're trying to find out whether it's a silty mix, a clay, a gravel, a sand?
Correct.
Which would be indication of permeability from the lagoon direct to groundwater?
Correct.
Instead of going through the process of the lagoon?
Right. And so again, it's just part of the process of what we have to do to go through that anti-degradation study with KDHE.
Okay.
The other thing they'll require is the city will have to do some sampling of the discharge, and they'll only have, I think, it's not very many constituents, but there are some things that they request having sampling reports for on the discharge. So basically, what the anti-degradation study is doing is basically saying, we're not impacting the river.
Right.
You know, we're not putting anything worse into the river than what's already there, or, you know, above limits of whatever constituent. So there'll be some sampling, but that's pretty minor.
Initial sampling or ongoing sampling?
It's just initial for the study itself.
Okay. So now, you're just trying to prove that what we're doing is okay?
Correct.
And the permit, there may be ongoing sampling, I'm not sure whether there will be if it's a discharge.
Yeah.
There'll be sampling requirements.
Mm-hmm, and I think typically, I don't know if they're all the same, but I think typically, it's maybe a couple times a year kind of deal. So it's not like a every week kind of thing, or anything like that.
Is the sampling where you just go down, like turn the faucet on, draw some water and go up and test it? Or is it equipment that's required to be installed on the discharge?
It'll probably be just a, I don't know, but I would think a...
Just a grab sample.
Send to the lab, and they'll test it and send the results to us.
Okay.
So it's just basically taking a jar, essentially, and taking it and dumping it into the sampling bottles is all, they're at the outfall, at the discharge point.
Well, with them located there and the flooding of the river, do these lagoons get flooded?
I don't know.
Are they high enough in the...
Well, they would have in '07, they've done enough water in '07, so...
Is that gonna be an issue with KDHE?
I don't foresee it being an issue. Most generally, those type things are always in a floodplain, it seems like, just like a wastewater treatment plant and everything else, they seem to be in real low point.
And I would say, the letter that you got from KDHE requiring the permitting and stuff didn't mention anything about having to relocate, it was just the permit piece of it, so we don't anticipate.
I didn't know if KDHE was opening a door.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't cough and go, it's going through this, and there's stuff in a floodplain, so it's not an issue.
So this water that goes into the lagoon comes from the washout of the basins or the filters?
Sludge off the clarifier.
The clarifier?
Yeah, sludge off the clarifier is what it is.
And that's the outside basin that's got the centers?
The center.
The center, okay. Trying to get familiar with your terms.
It's mostly the dirt out of the river, yeah.
And you're wanting to put the dirt back?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. And then, the filter backwash review, that's required by KDHE. Now that's, the filter is in the building?
Right.
And it's where you backwash to clean the filters?
Right.
They want that...
They're concerned about chlorine there, they're concerned about chlorine going into the river.
So that task, as far as our contract is concerned, is just a review of what the situation is and what the options are, and then getting KDHE buy-off on that. So then if they require to actually do some sort of design and do all of that, that would be in addition to what we've got here, because we need to figure out what KDHE's gonna require first. So this just involves taking a look at what the situation is, what the options are, and then going through the process with KDHE to determine what needs to be done.
Okay, so generally, they want us to tell them what is going into the river from that backwash system?
Right.
Then it'll determine whether it's acceptable or not, because increase, chlorine can be at a level that it becomes detrimental to river life, fish, and organic or plant life, so that's what we're trying to make sure.
Correct. Correct. So then the other items that are listed in the second table, and that have been added to the contract, were things that came about through discussions with city staff. So the first one is the clarifier sludge on line replacement. That line, basically from clarifier to the manhole, there's a manhole in between, and from that point, there's, the line's in fairly bad shape. We had looked at doing that and adding that into the design contract for Phase One, but it was delayed till Phase Two.
Right.
So that is added in here. The high-service pump station down by the river, wanted to look at some options for protecting that a little bit from the floodplain, looking at maybe some different types of doors, or, you know, kind of retaining wall, something like that. So looking at some options and developing a design for protection of that building. The filter building, just putting new coating into the flooring in the filter building. And then constructing a new building outside of the filter building to move the chlorine containers and the chlorine feed equipment into that building. So those are the things that have been, that were not included in the original design memo, but have been added since then.
Okay.
Okay?
And actually, the contract that we considered in October had everything except the filter building renovations and the security fencing?
It didn't, you're correct, it did not have those two, and it also didn't have the rehab of the clarif...
And the two stutters.
The rehab of the clarifier was not included in those. So if you look at the top table there, the design memorandum, project status, those last three, the clarifier repairs, the filter building renovations, and security fencing were not in the October contract. Those have been added since then, based on our discussions at that meeting, and then discussions with staff since then, so...
Clarifier, okay, repair, yeah.
Yeah, there's some repairs that need to take place to the mechanisms into the basin, and then the drive unit itself, so...
I think that brings us up to date. The things that, I guess I thought we need to talk more about with what was added from our original review.
Sure.
Did you get a copy of the original contract we considered in October?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So you guys feel free to enter in with any questions or anything, you know?
Thank you.
So the clarifier repairs, there's been some deterioration, or is this an upgrade of the system?
So as part of the design memo that we did in 2017, we had the manufacturer of the equipment come out and do an inspection of the equipment, and give us kind of a report of things that they thought needed to be fixed or repaired, or replaced, as far as the drive equipment is the big replacement, and the other is really just some repairs, blasting and coating the equipment, that kind of thing. And so the, what's included in that task item in our contract is basically everything that they had included in their recommendations to fix. And it's like I said, I know that that was replacement of the drive unit, there's some metal loss in a few places that needs to be repaired, so basically blasting everything, making the repairs to the metal, and then going ahead and recoding all of the equipment pieces, all the metal equipment pieces in the clarifier.
Okay. So again, just kind of be redundant, but you've got the basins that hold the water, clarifiers in the middle.
Kelly, do you have that aerial you had a minute ago?
Part of our project, primary settling basin repairs.
Thank you.
So the clarifier is a circle.
Correct, yes. So the settling basin itself is really that whole piece, but primarily on the other side of that basin, and the clarifier's the round equipment in the middle.
Okay, what do you call the basins to the left of...
That's the primary settling basin, to the left of the clarifier.
If you press the center, one there's a layer pointer.
Oh, thank you, okay. So this piece over here, you can see there's a baffle wall that is constructed here. So this is the primary settling basin through here, and then this is the clarifier itself. So in the primary settling basin, we were talking about some concrete repairs. City noticed kind of some leakage coming through the walls and some other things. So when we drained that whole thing, and when we got in there and inspected it, we actually did some concrete cores too, to make sure of what was there. And so we've recommended some repairs, just to get that kind of sealed up. And then, in the clarifier itself, the drive mechanism is in the center, on the top of the catwalk, or top of the walkway there. And so the drive mechanism needs to be replaced, and then also add some new controls, the ability to control that better on that drive mechanism. And then you look at all the metal, you know, compartments, some you can see and some you can't, metal elements here. But basically, there's just, primarily just some repair work. All in all, it really was, the metal was in pretty darn good shape. But there are some areas that need to be repaired, to make sure it, you know, continues to work for you.
It's primarily where the line goes in.
Correct, primarily where the line goes in, there's some loss of metal and some corrosion. And there were a few of the supports, if I remember right, out on the, kind of on the spokes, that you can kind of see that needed to be replaced or repaired. But overall, it's in pretty good shape.
So what you're saying, if we're gonna replace or do repairs on the basin, let's do that whole...
Do it all at once.
System all at once?
Correct.
Going to the clarifier, since we know there's issues, let's get it done all at once.
Yes.
What are the, what's, I'll call it a basins, that's south of the settlement basin, what's it called?
These basins here?
Yeah, the clarifier, East Basin and the West Basin.
So, that makes sense. So is the project including repairs on those two also?
Do those need repairing? Do we have issues with those?
We have not drained those to inspect them, so I mean, you can kind of see some concrete issues when you're, you know, right on the edge there, but it's not something that we have looked at previously.
They shut down in October, every year, plenty of them, go inspect ourselves.
Okay.
They're in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
More than anything, there's a sidewalk that goes through the middle of those, that could be replaced, probably needs to be replaced, it's spalding and falling apart. And that's about the only thing in there, and maybe some of the railing along that sidewalk is starting to deteriorate. Other than that, those are in...
Are in good shape?
Those have the slow mix, what they call paddle wheels that'll, and we've done, we do repairs to those all the time. They're just contact basins, mostly, where you...
Were those added for additional capacity, then?
No.
They were, are they the same age as the clarifier and the other basin as well?
Yes.
And the accelerated aging of the clarifying basin is because of the lime?
The clarifier was added in the sixties. The basins were actually construction in 1916, 13?
Original.
13.
Oh, 1913.
Wow.
So both sets of basins, the east and the west, were both built at the same time? And good engineering.
Well, I was wondering, you know, we got the revolving loan, and we're looking at addressing repairs, and we've got the settling, primary settling basin needing repairs. What's our schedule to know, or do we need repairs here? And you're identifying sidewalk, and you're identifying railing that needs to be repaired. You know, if we're going in repair mode, and we got a grant to do repairs, then systematically we should be looking at that too.
I understand what you're saying. I think it may not be a bad idea to do a core on those and see what condition of them is, and look at a coating or something on those too.
I think that with the same age, there's possibility, if you don't see increased damage when they're drained, that probably the construction is same and it's stable. I don't know what the cost of a core, I wouldn't want to do a, sometimes, you know, us architects and engineers, we can make a lot of money on studies and not prove much when we're done.
Yeah, we had a subcontractor, we subcontracted that work out, and we did that in the, we had our structural engineer here while they were doing it, but we had a sub that did that work for us.
You know, if we're looking at, talking about a coating is adequate, then, you know, if we are not blowing our budget beyond where we can feasibly handle it, it'd be logical, I would think, to just look, I don't know, how do commissioners feel?
My initial impression is that apparently, our preventive maintenance that we're doing annually is adequate to maintain those, the basins without the clarifier. But if there is an opportunity, while certain contractors are on-site, to do maybe some unusual type of preventive maintenance, then maybe we need to take a look at those opportunities. Otherwise, it seems that you're draining it and cleaning it, and maintaining it on an annual basis is taking good care of things.
Mostly, the leakage would be from either cracks through the concrete that appear with shrinkage of the concrete, or earth movement, and the pressure of the water, what might not be an open crack, when it's empty, when the water has weight, that can open a joint and cause leakage when it's filled. Saw that on a swimming pool once, it, with the water weight, it just pulled the expansion, and the control joint's opening up, so, but...
Well, if that's something you are interested in, then I can certainly get a quote for the sub that would do that, you know, actual core, to verify what those basins are, and, you know, what all's in there, just like we did on the settling basin. And then as far as our design fee, it would, it'd be minimal to add that into this contract, so it'd be that plus the sub work, but...
With setup of a contractor, the onsite mobilization, it would be more efficient for us all at one time, and definitely, when you identify the condition of the sidewalk and the railings, to address those at this time.
So do you want me to go ahead and go through the other items that we added? Are there any other, any questions on kind of what we have done to date, or kind of what things are? Like, Mayor said, we talked through most of this in October, but we do have a couple things that were added, so I'll just go ahead and go through those, if that's okay.
How about jump to the security fencing?
Sure. So one of the things that was included in the original design memo is we looked at some options for security fencing. And we actually, our landscape architect and I went to the park board during that process, and kind of showed these to them, and we had a good discussion about options and those kind of things. So through that, basically, the discussion was that like a wrought iron fence, or like a black chain link would be probably one of the two best options and most economical to fence in the actual water plant itself. And so the contract that you have before you includes doing one of those two options, it's either the wrought iron or the black chain link fence. We looked at some other options that we had presented, they had concrete columns and some other stuff, or a solid concrete type wall. And those were kind of, obviously, much more expensive. And then too, didn't see necessarily, you know, the benefit. There's an aesthetic appeal to it, certainly, but it, as far as security benefit, either of these will be just fine. So the contract is based on doing one of those two options.
Can you go back to the aerial, Kelly? There wasn't a, an indication of where you planned the location of the fence, how far...
So basically, it's the perimeter of the water plant, so you've got access gates through here right now, over in this area, and then there's obviously access this direction. So we would be looking at fencing, basically, from the buildings all the way around the basins, and we would come all the way back around on the site here, back to the, to enclose this area as well, because the new chlorine building would be on this side. So we'd basically be going from building around up here to the building. And I did specifically put in here that that does not include any fencing down, like at the high-service pump station or intake or anything like that, it's just the main plant, treatment plant area up on the top, above the river, so...
Of course, the wrought iron fencing is gonna be more expensive than the chain link fencing.
It is, it is, but it's, it's not, I mean, obviously, the solid concrete wall is, screen wall is a whole different story. The chain link and the wrought iron are much closer together than those two are.
Well, with the majority of the, or a large portion of fence off of East Oak Street, along the edge of the steep hill, and then even coming along the north side, you know, the aesthetic quality of going with a wrought iron fence, definitely in that area, it's not justified.
Sure.
But then is aesthetic for the additional expense for the wrought iron, when you look at the section along the oval, you know? I don't know if we would benefit, we can always use the money in maintaining and improvements on the facility, more than, the fence will keep people out, whether it be chain link eight foot high.
Correct, right. Either one will serve the purpose.
Wrought iron eight foot high, so...
We have black chain link around the swimming pool, that I thought was...
Keep with that.
Around the water plant would be perfectly acceptable, I would thought.
Yeah, you know, the picture of the wrought iron fence... Yeah, you know, the, the picture of the wrought iron fence looks nice, but the cost and.
There is a difference, yeah.
Definitely, we don't need it on the backside, but is the visual aesthetics going to add that much to it? And the, the thing with the chain link, you will be keeping small dogs and cats out of there.
Kids.
Kids, yeah, yeah. I know when our kids lived in the neighborhood, one of their dogs got out and I don't know how long it was in the basin before you guys found it. And it, it survived, but it was a small dog that wandered in without, and it could still fit through the wrought iron fence. But, you know, like you mentioned, the black chain link at the swimming pool, we would be bringing continuity, it wouldn't be so bad. And it is attractive there. And I'm just saying, you know, if, if we can make a decision on the fencing, then let's go forward and get it done.
Sure.
Alternate back and forth, but I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
My question, what was, what was the difference in cost between the wrought iron and the, probably quite a bit?
It was substantial, I don't.
It'd be a substantial amount of savings going with the black chain link?
Yes, there is. I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up on my computer. But there, there is a significant difference, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
In addition to the cost of initial installation, maintenance of a chain link fence down the road is also going to be less expensive because you can just get more mesh and more, and replace it any damaged portions.
That's correct.
That and I'm a big fan of consistency. So if there's already this type of structure within line of sight of the water treatment plant, it would be perfectly applicable to use this type of structure at the water plant as well.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So black chain.
Sounds good. Um, the other, the only other item that is different from what we talked about in October, we've already kind of talked about the rehab of the clarifier. So the only other one is the modifications to the filter building. So during the development of the design memo back in 2017, we had an architect put together some different options. Now, these are not exactly what we're going to be ending up with, with this contract. So I want to explain what we're kind of looking at. So the basic difference between the two options that the architect came up with was kind of the configuration of the restrooms. Option one is a common restroom locker room area. And the option two had kind of separate men's and women's facilities and then separate, you know, technically the whole separate locker room area. So what this contract is based on, and you will notice as well with both of these options, there's a building addition. We are not doing the building addition, this contract is strictly working within the existing space. So it will be, layout will end up being slightly different than what's up here, but just to give you a perspective. So what this contract is based on is the option one, which is on the left side of the, of the page, that kind of reconfigures the restroom and locker room area a little bit. We will not be doing, if you notice in the front, and the whole front is, would be brand new on the options here. We're not doing that. We will continue to come in the stairs directly from the south like we, you know, is currently. But the chlorine room, which is the room just to the north of the lab, all that equipment will be coming out of there and being put into the new chlorine feed building. So that, that space will be reconfigured as part of.
The long narrow building?
Yeah. We talked about moving that out with the, with the chlorine building and then feeding it back in. We'll still use it, yeah, we'll have all the equipment, but.
That's where we'll pull the vacuum in to get the chlorine. So the valves are all, you know, the chlorine valves are there.
Right, we were looking at relocating everything with the chlorine containers and the feed and everything into one building.
Everything from the dock out there is what she, is that what you mean?
Well, we had talked about, okay, maybe I'll let you talk.
We're talking about looking at reconfiguring, moving this stuff out of here and utilizing this space. Can we put this within somewhere in?
So what we had looked at based on the talking with Terry was taking the chlorine, the actual chlorine, you know, you got the big ton cylinders that sit out on the dock, putting that and the feed equipment all in one structure. So then that allows you to have all of that in, so we'll, you know, we'll be pulling, you know, you'll be pulling that vacuum. So we'll have, you know. We can reconfigure that as well. But, I mean, we can either utilize that chlorine room space for part of the remodel area or, you know, we don't have to, that was what Terry and I had talked about doing, so. But either way, the filter building modifications is going to be working within the existing footprint of the building to kind of reconfigure the spaces a little bit.
Well, that was kind of after looking at the plan and the add-on for such little space. And then with the improvements in the treatment facility, it seemed like when we're looking at needing an office or some of those small spaces that in addition, just increase the cost.
The addition would increase the cost quite a bit, which is why we're basing it on utilizing, reconfiguring the existing space.
And then when I looked at your, your contract, you said that there was a statement about existing HVAC. If it was determined it wasn't adequate and it seemed like, well, if you're adding on square footage, it's probably not adequate.
But we're not adding square footage.
But now it's how you're saying that you, you work within that building, the HVAC should handle the square footage that's there without.
Correct, and that's our assumption as well. Of course, if we get into it and find, okay, this isn't really going to work or there's issues with the HVAC system that need to be repaired or something to that effect, then we would have to look at that as additional design work. But at this point in time, we're assuming again, like you said, since we're not adding square footage, that we can reconfigure what's there.
We're, we're looking at option one right now in front of us.
Without the issue.
Without the addition. So if you notice across the front, so right now the stairs where that, where it shows that entryway, the stairs actually come from the south and go into that area.
The entry and the office are part of a new addition that would not be part of the.
Correct, that is not part of this, this contract right now. We're looking at utilizing the existing space within the existing footprint of the building.
So there's a, in this particular example, there's a chlorine room indicated, you were just speaking that you would reutilize or reconfigure that for some other usage because you're not adding on.
So.
Is that right?
Yeah, so what Terry and I had talked about was utilizing that space. So basically being able to take down that wall and utilize that space as part of the renovated area there in the front. By moving the feed equipment that's in there out to the new building.
Right. So I'm getting up to speed here and if this is not the appropriate time to talk about this, since we're going to be talking about it later, that's okay. I can, I just would like to review at some point in time in our conversation this morning, the, the addition of the building and the, the utility that will be derived from that. And so whenever we get around to that, part of the conversation we were just having about this option is dependent upon the construction of new space.
Yes.
Of a new chlorine building.
A new chlorine building, yeah. So as, as we get around to that, maybe this is the time to talk about it. If it is, I'm, I'm ready, but.
I think you haven't been aware, the need for the, you might explain why we're looking at a new chlorine building. Wasn't there some issues with safety, the chlorine gas?
It's a safety issue. The chlorine ton cylinders, of course, those are pressurized ton cylinders. They're on a dock, an open dock. And if you were to have a rupture of one of those tanks, it would impact this community in a very large way. You know, I don't want to put numbers out there and scare people, but it would be a huge impact.
Right.
And if we can put them in a contained building that's designed for that, and if you have that, God forbid have that happen, it would be contained in that building.
So, so safety is the, the driving force behind building, the building. But you said that was designed for this type of leak. So is it designed for like an explosive decompression of one of the cylinders? Is the, would it, would it be able to withstand an explosion of that type? Is that the type of building we're building?
So the structure itself would just be, we're, we're just looking at like a precast concrete type building for that, you know, the building. What the safety feature is, is that's called a, it's basically a containment around those, you know, around the ton cylinders so that if there is a leak, it contains it within that so it doesn't get outside the building.
So the building doesn't actually contain it? The building, it contains the mechanism that contains it.
Correct, mm-hmm.
Well, that's what I was struggling with because if you had a building full of chlorine, you'd still have a problem.
Correct. So the, the mechanisms are designed to contain it within the system. And the dock itself right now is not configured to be able to put those on, you know, to be able to put those on the existing dock. So a new structure is necessary to be able to do that.
And adding to the dock to accommodate is excessively costly?
There's other chemicals that are stored out there. So we, on right outside, on just on the other side of the dock, there are other chemical tanks for other chemical feeds. So if we were to try and expand the dock, then we'd have to reconfigure all of that as well.
Because they are adjacent to the dock on the, on the, what would be the east side of the dock. So those would have to be moved in order to expand the dock to accommodate the mechanism that contains the tank.
Correct, so the chlorine tanks right now sit out here and there are other, they're, they're on this side of the dock. And then there are other chemical feed, you know, large tanks that sit over here.
So relocating those chemical feed tanks is more expensive than building a new structure?
I would say by the time we relocate all of that, add on to the dock and do everything we need to do there. I mean, to me, cost-wise, I can't tell you exactly. My guess is it would maybe, may end up being a similar cost, but it will be much easier from an operations standpoint and a construction standpoint to do a new building and move stuff over once it's ready rather than try and temporarily move this stuff over, build something here, add, you know, that kind of thing. So overall cost, if you look at it from a construction standpoint, an operations standpoint, probably, I, I think it would be more if you were to try and expand the dock and have to relocate all the other equipment.
So what you could do with a new building is have the building constructed, the tank inside the containment system established and then just pipe from the building and, and then do demolition of the, the valves and everything and the existing filtration plant. Okay. So the, the flow of operation of the treatment facility would be uninterrupted.
Much less of an interruption.
So near term, that it could be cost-effective for us to build an additional structure and relocate chemicals into it and, and relocate the parking lot, I think, as part of that cost as well.
Parking lot would be relocated to the west side of the building.
To the west side, which would not be inside the security fence.
We can make it within the security fence, typically we don't with parking lots, it's not necessary.
I wouldn't think it would be needing to have any security, other than maybe some lighting. All right, I was, I was concerned about that. It looked like, you know, we were adding perhaps additional infrastructure and that therefore infrastructure maintenance costs because of additional square footage under, under roof there. But if that, I guess the maintenance cost ongoing would increase slightly because you still have a building with a roof and.
You do, but we would be looking at just from a.
Overhead doors and those kinds of things that would be needing to be maintained as the, as they wear out and, and need to be refreshed and maintained.
We would be looking at, like I said, our initial thought with that would just be a precast concrete building with a precast, you know, double T roof, you know, so it's all concrete. So the maintenance is really pretty minor. You'd have it like an EPDM or some kind of roof, you know, on top of it.
What kind? EPDM?
It's a rubber.
Rubber kind of material. Yeah, it's a rubber type material.
Vinyl.
Either way, but some sort of, you know, that on top of there. So you would have to replace that every, I don't know, those are typically twenty, thirty year, I think, products, but.
Unless you could put some slope on it and put a standing seam metal roof over it.
We could do that as well.
Then we're looking at fifty, sixty.
Yeah. But from the building itself, we were looking at concrete simply because it is a lot easier to maintain. I mean, there is very little maintenance, if anything, on the concrete building, so.
Being a separate building, that also gives you a safety, additional safety factor not being in the facility where the, where your people are. Because the whole idea behind this is safety to get that moved away.
The cost to try and attach it, there's so much around it, around the existing building, that it makes it difficult to attach it. So it's cheaper to build it away in an open space and then run piping to the building than to, to deal with the issues close to the building.
And it will be, like you said, right next to, just to the east of that dock, but it will be a separate space.
Close, in between the generator and the building?
Yeah, which is why we need to move the parking lot to the other side.
The, ultimately, I'd like to see the numbers on that, but I'll accept at this point in time that it looks like it's going to be lowest cost solution would be to build the additional space and move those chemicals and that containment equipment out to that additional space.
But since we haven't seen actually a, a final site plan or a building plan, once a preliminary is established, we could ask that it be presented to the commission for review with those numbers.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Please.
And what we'll do, we can talk to, you know, contractor to kind of get an idea as far as what that, to try and quantify the difference in construction and in constructability with having to move those things around and temporary pipe and all that kind of stuff versus, you know, doing a new structure, so. But yeah, we can do that once, like you said, we get a, a, you know, preliminary layout of everything done in the first phase of our design work.
Thank you.
Certainly.
On that HVAC system, did we not replace a unit at the water plant here recently?
Yes.
Okay.
The air conditioner, air handler.
That all went out this, this past, or this last summer?
Oh, that's the original boiler.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, that's something as we're, since this is a maintenance revolving loan and with the boiler, the age, its maintenance and then looking at the efficiency rating too. You know, hate to do all the work and then in a year, the boiler go out. You know, I don't know how well the boiler is maintained or anything like that, but.
Probably well maintained.
What's the age?
I don't know the age on that boiler, I'd have to go look, do you know? It was installed right after Gerald Stargardt, I believe. Cause he can remember. I think Lee Feeney could have actually installed it.
So that's twenty-five years?
Yeah. But the state comes in and inspects it, it's a year anyway.
With maintenance, they're pretty trouble-free if they're maintained.
It has been.
Yeah.
Okay, so you get, you get a long life out of that?
With it, but I don't know what the life of one of those is.
Long, with maintenance, it's a long time, controls. If they're drained down, cleaned and.
Running through the water lines.
Yeah. So the parking lot will probably enter from Oak Street outside. The, the service drive is going to come in.
Well, we'll, we'll have to survey all that as part of the initial and make determinations of what makes the most sense. And we'll have to talk through city about cuts into the curves and all that good stuff.
And we talked about Cornerstone doing the survey.
Correct, and this is based on them.
And it's that whole area over to the.
So yeah, it's all the south, so do you mind, I'm sorry, Kelly, do you mind pulling up that aerial again? Yes, we did contact Cornerstone, so they'll be the ones doing the survey work. And yes, we did contact Cornerstone, so they'll be the ones doing the survey work. Okay, so we will be surveying all the area around this, around the building, so all right through here because this will be where the new parking lot and the new structure. So we'll be surveying all of this. And then we also have a bit here that needs to get surveyed down through here for where the sludge line, the clarifier sludge line that we talked about replacing, we need to get surveyed through that area as well, back through here, so that includes all of that. I think when I was here in October, you asked me to get a cost to survey the whole site, and I think the difference, what's included in here for them to do, just the, the bit that we absolutely need is 6,000 total, and it was going to be around 12, it was about double that to do the whole site, so. What's included in here now is just to do what we need for the project work.
Yeah, I think the request for the identifying the size of the trees, there were a lot of trees.
And we reduced that, uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, we reduced that in the original, in the cost, so the, the cost that's included in here includes going, I can't remember, I think it's like so much larger on the trees.
Does your survey go out to Oak Street?
Yes.
And up to the
Yes, it goes from street to street.
Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I can see that, the transformer bank there, and that's where the initial, the, the original feed, or the, the last feed for the water plant was located down there in the floodplain. So is that, is that still in, is that still in use or that's not in use anymore?
No, it's up here now.
So everything, everything is run off the, the pad mount that's set up, set up hot?
Correct.
Okay.
That comes from the alley.
New pole.
West of Park Boulevard.
Mm-hmm.
Comes over.
Okay, so that's just an abandoned primary that
I don't know if they've taken that all out or not.
Okay.
I think they're working on taking all that out down into floodplain.
It's all gone.
Okay, it's all gone? Okay, I just saw that though and I wondered why it's still there.
Everything's gone.
Okay.
Just because it's an old aerial.
Okay.
West of River.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, so that's all up here in the, up in the parking lot area now.
From February 2019, I think is the aerial around that time.
Yeah, it was probably right, right before we started doing all this stuff, so.
So on the, the pump building, to keep it from flooding, you're, you're looking at those three doors or are you looking at a retention berm or dike that comes out from it?
So what we will evaluate are kind of what the options are and then give a recommendation and then, you know, get a consensus on which way to go before we do any design work, but our initial thoughts are either different types of doors that are meant to keep the flooding, you know, to keep the waters out, or some sort of retaining wall are the two things, our initial thoughts. But we'll come up with some options and then come back to the, the city for approval before we start an actual design of an option.
So when you look at the doors, you're going to have to look at the structural integrity of the walls, the lateral.
Yeah, and all of that will play into costs and what option we end up going with, but
Because with them not waterproof, water goes inside and outside and it's pretty much stabilized the height, but when you keep water out, now you're creating a swimming pool wall, but reversed.
Yeah, keep this, keep these guys from having to put sandbags out every time. So.
The tanks outside, are they the clearwells?
Clarifiers.
Clarifiers.
Oh, down by the river?
Clearwells.
Those are the clearwells, yeah.
The two with the metal
Covered on the
Yes.
Okay.
The other one is not used, hasn't been ever stopped in there.
Is that going to be removed as part of that because it's in really bad condition and it's falling apart?
Well, we can, we can discuss that.
Well, I mean, it could fall on one of those other structures.
So do we want to look at demolishing that out, getting it out of there or?
When we put together our cost estimates as we move forward with the design work on this, we can include a line item for demolition of that, we can get an idea of what that is just so you know the cost, and then whether you include it in the final project or not, that's your decision, but, but we can get an idea of a cost for it.
It's going to fall apart.
Sure.
Okay.
Condition is one thing, if it's deteriorated beyond use and if it'll never be rehabbed, then
Never be used.
Then there's no need of waiting for something.
Waiting for all the clearwell.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, good, that's a good point.
I know, I know 35 years ago that the director at that time tried to get me to demo it with the city, and I said, no, not like that.
No. No.
Understand that for the jackhammer.
I've seen some YouTube videos. They always come under failed or something. Okay. Okay, so I think, any questions about the scope of the work or the portions of the project?
No, I think we've, we've moved forward on and identified what we want proposal on, especially the chlorine containment building and the costs associated with that, and we were pretty well in agreement that the black chain link fence, that was the, the option to go for, being it's already in use in the park and, I'm trying to think if there's anything else there.
So how have our, our changes that we talked affect the bottom line?
So the only thing that we talked about that would affect the price included in this contract is looking at those, the other contact basins, so I can get you, you know, what, if we want to add that task, what that would look like, because like I said, we'd have to have the sub come out and we want to do the cores like we did on the other basin and then just a, you know, a, you know, an estimate of designing repairs for that. So that's the only thing that would, that we talked about that would change the contract itself.
So demoing that structure, would not any additional design?
No, for design costs, no, it would strictly be just a, you know, as far as a plan sheet's concerned, we just put a demolition sheet, that's
Okay.
We can, that's, that's nothing. But, and we will just as part of our cost estimating, as we're going through the initial cost estimates, we'll just get a, an idea of an estimate from a contractor of what that would take and include that line item, so there's no additional change to this to be able to, to put that information there.
Demo that before they put the blowdown line in.
Probably. But no, that will not affect anything. And then the other thing we talked about was getting kind of an idea of a cost comparison between building the new structure versus expanding the dock and having to move everything else, and we'll just do that as part of our initial cost estimating. So no change to that, so the only thing that would change the contract is doing anything with the contact basins.
Okay. And to come and, and present to the commission your final plans that won't affect your fee any?
No, so the fee that you've got here includes us coming to work through, obviously we've got several meetings, we've got an initial site visit for everybody to come back out, we obviously have our electrical guys out here quite a bit, but our other design folks, so an initial site visit to get them to come out and take a look at everything. This includes, like I said, all the other work. We will have review sessions with staff and with the commission along the way, and this also includes doing what's necessary for the funding aspect of it. We'll have to do an amendment to the initial preliminary engineering report that we submitted to KTHE because it only included what was done in phase one, or there's some additional things that we're going to add, so we'll need to just do an amendment to that report and then all the funding aspects of everything that we need to do during construction and everything is included in this as well. And we do have, this goes through the design, KTHE approval, bidding and construction administration on our side of things, so the only thing that's not included in this contract at this point in time is any sort of onsite inspection during construction, that'll be something that we can talk about when we get the design all nailed down and kind of make a determination of what's necessary during the electrical work. And we just came down on our monthly progress meetings and took a look at everything, just because of the nature of the work, we didn't really necessarily need to have somebody down here all the time watching the contractor. This will be a little different, just because of the nature of the work, and so that's something as we get through design that we can talk about, what makes the most sense, and then you guys can make a decision on what you want to do with the inspection piece, so that'll be separate later on.
Well, in the, in the contract, Exhibit A, under Task 3, Geotech Investigations, Item A identifies, investigation scope shall include work for the chemical feed relocation scope item only, but then there were some borings at the lagoon also, weren't there?
Um, yes, let me take a look back at that item here real fast. So there we go.
I noticed, I think it was under exclusions. Item 12, it says, "Geotech work for existing residual lagoons shall be only a boring log, no soil analysis or recommendations will be developed."
Yeah, so
So it indicates
The cost that is included in here includes doing both of those borings, one for the building and one for the, the lagoon, so I will make that addition in the, in the lagoon piece, or in the anti-degradation study.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
The, the, what was the original amount that, that we borrowed for this? Was it 3 million?
I think it's 3.
3.1 million, okay. And how much, how much of that money has already been allocated and, and spent toward the completion of Phase 1?
It was a little over a billion.
I think that's correct, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up if you want.
So we're probably looking, we, we have quite a balance of $2 million?
Approximately.
Pretty close to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which I can be modified to, I mean, I always happy to want as more money.
I was saying less.
Yeah, yeah.
Less is more, right?
Well, as, as we start to get into this design, you'll notice that we're going to have cost estimates along the way, so we typically will do kind of a 30%, 60%, 90% design stages, and with that, we present cost estimates and our contingency is pretty high at the beginning just because we haven't gotten into the details yet, and that gets refined as we go along. So we'll have a, a good idea before we get to the end of our design process if, you know, things need to be put in as add alternates, you know, or if you want to go ahead and extend the loan to cover, you know, hey, we've got this much left, let's go ahead and cover the loan. And if you do decide to extend the loan amount, it is an amendment to the loan, it's a paperwork thing with KTHE, it's not a lot of, we don't have to go back and redo, you know, all of the, the information, it's usually just an amendment form to fill out, so. We get to that point and decide that the loan needs to be extended a little bit or the amount changed a little bit, we can do that for you too.
And Task 8, rehabilitation of clearwells in North Settling Basin. We hadn't talked about anything on the clearwells. Those were the two down below.
Correct. We are just noting that we're not, we're, we're specifically excluding those things out of our scope, so that is listed in the exclusion, doing any sort of destructive testing or doing anything with those.
Okay, because Item A, you're, says, "Determine options for inspection of interior clearwells."
That is strictly just determining what the options are and giving you, so that's really just a memo saying, here's ways that you can do that, you can use a diver, you can do this, you could do this, so it's just a, that's just a, a technical, you know, memo to tell you what some options are, that does not include any cost to actually do any of that.
Okay, and it says, and B, you're going to contact inspection firms and obtain proposals for the required inspection work.
Correct.
So the actual inspection work is not included in this?
No, it is not.
So, okay.
So that would give you enough information to determine if that's something you want to go ahead and do or not.
Okay, so the exterior, you're going to have a structural engineer look at the outside of the clearwells?
Correct, we were going to have
In your contract.
In the contract, we will have our structural engineer just take a look at it and note if there's any major deficiencies that they note, but as far as inspecting the inside, we will just be getting proposal costs for other people to do that work and giving those to you.
So the inside, what they would probably be finding, if the outside doesn't show cracks or major deterioration as differential movement or something, then interior will probably be a coating or some kind of preservative.
We're starting to see a little bit of water leakage coming through the wall in some places, not very much, just dampness on that mixture.
That's bad.
So a, a good coating on the interior would probably be the
Okay. Yeah, because once water migrates into the wall, if there's any steel reinforcing in there, now you get rust balloon, which breaks, the concrete fractures, so, okay.
Yeah, so what this includes from our structural engineer, just a visual inspection, so if you know, it's in the exclusions, we specifically exclude any sort of destructive testing, so we're not going to do cores or anything like that on those structures, we're just going to look at them visually and then give you options if you want to have somebody take a look on the inside.
Yeah, you don't want, if water, if you're seeing moisture that you feel is coming through, it's, now is the time to
Get it stopped.
Right.
Yeah, okay. You know, all these words, clarifier, clearwell, so
Since I, Lacy left, I volunteered to dive the tank, so I know it's back there.
Sweet, all right.
Yeah. So on, on Task 9, High Service Pump Station Flood Protection, your fee covers whether doors are installed or a rim dike is
Correct. And that also includes taking a look at flood level information, talking to, you know, figuring out there's permitting that's required from Division of Water Resources or anybody else because we're close down by the river and all that stuff, so, and then developing a couple of options and then putting together the plan sheets for whatever option we go with.
Yeah, that gets pretty involved with, in the floodplain of
The floodplain is shown on there, on that aerial actually. So it's the newest floodplain?
Technically, it's not a floodplain.
Oh, well.
The line.
But
It's, it's what they sent us.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
According to that, but yeah, right, so.
Okay, Task 16, Construction Administration Service attendance at up to 10 progress meetings is coordinated by the contractor. This, let's see. So you're saying the only thing not included here would be the extent of onsite inspections?
Correct. Yeah. So basically, we would be doing all the same things that we did during Phase 1 as far as processing pay applications, reviewing all the submittals, you know, addressing contractor questions, filling out all the things for KTHE, and the 10 progress meetings is based on what we anticipate construction time to be, so that's a, you know, monthly meetings during construction, and then of course, we will do as part of the, we'll, we'll do an initial pre-construction meeting, of course, we'll do that, and then the progress, up to 10 progress meetings during construction, and then we'll have a final walkthrough of the project to develop the punch list and all of that, but we don't, correct, so the only thing that's not included in here during construction is, is actual inspection services, having one of our people down here all the time while the contractor's working.
Yeah. It seems like the fence, the actual building modifications, parking lot, that's not going to require extensive inspection, but I guess when you come into basin repairs, clarifier, the, the line replacement, those are a little different. Those are a little different that you need to see as they go in. I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at. There's two ways of contract bids, either the contractor states the number of days to complete the work or you specify the completion time.
Yes, we do.
Okay, if you specify the completion time, then I think we can get close to a fixed number. I don't want it to come in that we're, we're anticipating so many days completion and then when we sign the contract, completion time doubles and now the city comes back with an amendment.
No, so when we, when we put together this, we will determine the number of contract days, so the contract agreement between the city and the contractor will have in it a date for substantial completion and then a date typically thirty days later for final. So the substantial completion date is when everything is done to where the city can utilize the intended improvements and then the final completion, that extra thirty days is those punch list items, getting the last paperwork in, you know, that kind of stuff to finish out the contract. We set those number of days in the contract and the contractor is aware of that at bid time with the number of days for completion are. We base that on construction time, equipment lead times, those kinds of things, but we set those number of days and then we put in liquidated damages clauses, so that if they go over that, then the city has the ability to assess them liquidated damages, that set amount per day past the contract time. So if the contractor is, you know, something happens where like we have just really crappy weather for, you know, weeks and weeks and weeks on end, okay, it's okay, you know, that's legitimate potentially to add on contract days, but if they're just not doing their job and not getting people out there, that's the city's way to make them, you know, get back out there or they're going to pay. Pay money to the city for the damages that you've incurred by not being able to use the, the work, so.
So for the determination of onsite inspection, we'll deal with, first, we'll do that with an amendment to your contract.
Yeah, so as we go through the design process, we'll kind of have those discussions as we get closer to, you know, the end of our design process to make the determination of, okay, based on what work is going on out here, what we, what we think, you know. There are certain things, you know, that, you know, your staff can see and, and watch over, but it really is, if you want to have somebody truly watching the construction to make sure that things are being put in the way they're supposed to and being done per the plans, it's really a full-time job and your staff has, you know, obviously a lot of other things to take care of.
And I don't think staff needs to be dealing with the contractor when muscles needed, that their, their job is to run the plant. And it's not to argue with the contractor why he's not following the drawings.
So that's, as like I said, as we get through design, that'll be something that we'll talk about, what some options are and, and talk to you about that, so that would be an amendment to the contract to a later date and part of the reason we do that, you know, with this large of a project and different parts and pieces too, is just, once we get farther into all that, we'll have a better idea of what we really think is, is necessary.
And that should come, you know, in my, my opinion, is before the project goes to bid.
Correct, we would have that discussion before that timeframe.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, any other question, commission?
Okay, so just to.
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any at this time.
Okay.
So do you want me to send a revised contract with the work at the contact basins added in? Or do you want me to tell you what that is and you decide if you want to add it in or, just want to make sure I'm providing you what you want. Um, for the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't you give us an idea of the cost of the work?
Okay.
Plus engineering costs for us to consider.
Yeah.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, fine with me, yes.
Okay, I will provide that then back to Terry and Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can consider. Accepting the agreement at our next commission meeting.
Okay.
That's next week, we'll give you enough time.
Well, I can put this cost information together, I guess, and then if you're going to consider whether you want to add that to the contract next week and then if you do, if you don't, then the contract you have is fine, if you do, then I can provide a new contract for the, for the next meeting after that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
We appreciate you coming out.
Certainly.
Today and.
Yep.
Your patience and explaining what we're, we're talking about, I think. There's a lot of, a lot of things, you know, with the drawings that we have seen and, you know. Keep, the, the question I had with the building was why are we adding on and that was already resolved, but, okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I'm good.
I'm good too.
This was the only item. On our agenda, so I think we accomplished our task. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.